Keith was placed.
Yeah.
Everybody was placed.
Yeah.
What else?
Just movement.
Being of the schools and juggling people around from position to position so we don't have to leave people.
No. The joy. Okay, all right. Good evening. It is 6:30 PM and we are going to officially call this meeting to order. And everything. All right. Good evening. It is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. Welcome to the Charter Township Meridian zoning board of appeals meeting. First, we'll begin with a roll call. Member Benoit.
Present.
And Member Koenig.
Present.
Member Bennett.
Brooks.
Brooks. Do it again.
It's okay. I was like, Brent, uh, I almost said my first name.
I asked earlier too. I said Bennett earlier. They're like, no, it's Brooks. I apologize.
That's okay.
And Member Chisice.
I'm here.
And Chairman Sore is present. All right. Now that we got all the awkwardness out of the way, well, I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda. If anybody has any.
Approval of the agenda is presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Any thoughts on tonight's agenda? If not, this is a vote to approve tonight's agenda. Member Benoit.
I approve.
Uh, Member Koenig.
Yes.
Member Brooks.
Yes.
And Member Chisice. The chair votes yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved, so we'll move on to ratification of mess of which we have none this, uh, I'm assuming that's going to be for our next.
Next month we'll get them.
We'll have both. Okay. Sounds good. And that brings us to communications, which I believe we try to typically roll into our new business as it comes up. Would that be safe to say, Mr. Chapman?
Correct.
Okay, we will acknowledge we have two communications that are attached to ZBAC case number 25-04. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move directly into new business, which brings us to ZBA case number 25-04. 2952 Footman, David and Luanne Price. 2952 Footman Drive, East Lansing, 48823. Go ahead, Mr. Chapman.
Okay, so the applicant intending to enclose an existing unenclosed deck located on the northeast corner of their existing single-family home. This will be on an enclosed porch and measures approximately 16 feet by 17 feet in area. The applicant intends to replace the unenclosed porch with a new enclosed porch slash three-season room, which measures 16 feet by 17 feet, three and a half inches in area. And this would encroach into the required rear yard setback. The existing unenclosed porch is permitted under 86564B to encroach into the rear yard setback eight feet. It's located 21 feet, eight inches at its closest point from the rear property line and encroaches eight feet, six inches into the rear yard setback. The proposed enclosed porch will be constructed in place of the existing unenclosed. Basically, the enclosed porches are considered an integral part of the principal building, so they have to meet the same setbacks, which in this case is the rear yard setback of the underlying zoning district. And the setback is 30 feet in this case. The lot has a depth of 124 feet. And the enclosed porch is proposed to be located in place of the existing unenclosed porch in a setback 21 feet, six inches from the rear property line, which is located eight feet, six inches into that required rear yard setback. So a variance of eight feet, six inches is requested.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to come up and speak on behalf of this case?
Yes.
Who's up? Come on up to the podium. You're going to state your name and address for the public record, please, sir.
My name is Matt Nelson and our address for the business is 7051 West Parks Road in St. John's, Michigan. So.
Anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Chapman presented to us?
Um, just, I mean, and we did write out, um, there's a, there's a thing in there I wrote up, kind of talking about the request. They have an existing addition and this is basically the same depth into the setback area that that is. I think it's a one-foot additional just because of the way the design is for the structure to be able to tie in properly. So, you know, the main goal is to give them better living space. They have a forested area behind them that has a lot of bugs and mosquitoes and it's a little hard to use the outdoor space. So the goal of the project is to give them a proper enclosed porch space that they can use kind of more throughout the nice seasons of the year. So, that said, there's no surrounding neighbors that are in view of this. You know, the neighbors that they do have, I think they got letters from, stated that they agree with or approve of the construction of the project as well. So, um, yeah.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak on this case this evening? If you don't have anything for the public record, we'll just have you stay up here, Mr. Nelson, and we'll be able to ask some questions.
Yeah, if there are any questions right now.
Okay. Anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening? If not, we're going to close public comment and get into board time. All right. Public comment is closed for the moment and we will go into board time. Any questions or anything to start off with? I would acknowledge too, just for the minutes, that we did receive communications from Ruben and Shannon Mesa and Rod and Lorraine Melarangi, both that supported this variance. So that is noted for the public record. They're, they're neighbors that are in support of this, this particular variance. So. Any questions? Yes, Member Chisice.
I think this is for Mr. Chapman. Looking at the design, it appears this house is already protruding onto the setback on the, it's like the east side. Is that true?
Yeah, it is. Um, I mean, it was built in 1978, so I can't really speak. I don't have any variances that were for this property, so I can't really speak on how that happened. So for all instances, it's non-conforming.
Should this application be amended to include that?
No, no.
I personally don't have a lot of structural questions. I think that I could address, you know, minimum action. Obviously, they're replacing what exists with something more permanent. So I do understand the need for the ordinance. Curious if anybody has any questions about when we start to apply the criteria. So if that will help with questions, I can start with criteria. That sound good? All right. So the first criteria would be unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. I think the answer that was given by the applicant, by Mr. Nelson's letter here is that because they're replacing, let's see.
Replacing a deck.
Replacing a deck. And unique circumstances being that they only have one neighbor and one neighboring house. And the proposed addition is hidden, so it's not obstructing anyone's view. It's also surrounded by the Tower of What Preserve, so there's no, you know, no sightlines from the road or anything to that nature. So. Uniqueness is, is going to be interesting.
Yeah.
Member Chisice.
I guess I had a question for the builder.
Sure.
On, some places describe this as a built-on-a-deck style.
Yeah, so we're, so we're building an enclosed room, so it'll have like windows and stuff like that, but it's not like a heated and cooled room. They're just using it as like a three-season type space. But it is built on like a deck frame, so instead of having like a full concrete foundation that's going to upset, you know, soil and everything else, we're just going to be digging holes for posts like we would with a typical deck or often done with three-season and four-season type builds. So the only ups, only thing we're going to upset with any of the soil or natural, you know, drainage on the property or anything of that nature would be just digging those holes and refilling them. So you won't, you won't have a big foundation that we're pulling out, digging and changing the grade and all of the, you know, natural water and everything out there.
That's how I interpret it. So this will not be enclosed underneath the room?
No, it'll be open. Yep. It will have like a lattice work. It will have like a, like a lattice work down there, but it won't, it won't be like fully enclosed or anything.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Is the original porch or is the concrete pad porch, is that from the original house?
Yeah. So the section like on the site plan, you can see to what I believe is the, I don't see the north indicator, but I believe that's to the south of the addition that we have. That's the south of your addition, correct? The addition we're doing, your, your existing additions to the, can you scroll down a little bit more, Keith?
Yeah.
North. So it's to the east, the addition, I'm sorry. The addition to the east was, if it was an addition or part of the original house, this is already there and has a concrete foundation under it. So that's there currently and that's what their existing deck, where we're building the new addition, that's where the existing section of the deck is, the same size as the addition that we're currently building. And it's attached to the existing house on both those sides.
So it's not concrete, it's a deck, correct?
Yeah. Well, that existing part of the house, um, to the east.
So, okay, so that's.
That section where Keith's hovering over, that is existing now and that's on a concrete foundation.
Okay, that is. Oh, that's, that's another addition you did at a previous time.
They've.
Or assuming.
They purchased.
It was there. Okay.
Yeah. We got it. It's a four-season roof.
And you guys have been in your house.
I see. Okay.
How long you guys been in your house?
Seven years.
Seven years. So it's.
So it was a pre-existing?
Yeah, pre-existing, seven years.
Now, is that a deck there that's elevated that, that you're replacing?
Yeah, the deck is the same, it's the same height as the floor of the house and that's what we're replacing. We're, we're replacing that deck with this.
Yeah. How high off the ground is that? Approximately?
Uh, it's like four foot.
Okay.
Ground. The, the ground, like the, the grading drops in their yard, so like up towards the house is probably like three feet. And then when you get out to the end, it's probably like four to five feet.
That, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just keep scraping down from there. So the edge of their property line, you're probably more like six foot down from the house or better.
All right. So as far as unique circumstances go, it's, it's an existing structure. So it's something they're trying to work with what they have. I could mostly mean unique circumstances based on that. Member Koenig, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say that, you know, the house spinning up against that nature preserve of the woods, I mean, we've got houses like that all over the township that do that, so I wouldn't consider that unique. However, I do agree with you, Madam Chair, that I think the uniqueness of this is that there's existing part of the structure that, who knows when that was built, there has no variance on that's already encroaching into the setback.
Right.
And this is an existing deck that they're not, the structure itself is not, even though it's being covered and enclosed, it's not expanding.
Yeah.
Right. So that to me is, I mean, I know these, some of these criteria are a little subjective.
Right.
So that to me is the subjective part of it is, you know, is could there be a unique situation? I, my belief is there is just because part of that building, and I know your neighbor, that 2940, it looks like part of their back of the building is awfully close to being in that setback as well. So. And, but it's not every building. So that's something that's particular to this property.
Well, and I would, I would, I think Mr. Chapman pointed out too, if these homes were built before, prior to this code, so now, they're now non-conforming, so ish. Kind of looking like, eh, might be, but prior to the setbacks existence?
Um, so the code, the basic code is 1960, so it would have been after, but if it was rezoned at some point in time, which I didn't come across either.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Interesting.
Yeah.
But as Mr. Koenig pointed out, the house next door looks like it is too.
Yeah.
So it, it.
Something happened.
We don't know what happened with those builders.
I think, I remember looking at the code, I think the, the part of the ordinance, if I'm correct or if I'm wrong, Mr. Chapman, but I thought it said something about, which again, like I said last meeting, I, one thing in the code that I've never seen anywhere else I've worked, or, see, I've never seen this, you know, unenclosed porches and that can be eight feet into a setback. I've never seen that before, but that's in our code, so that's good. But I thought that was a relatively newer, if I remember seeing that, or was that, I thought it was something that was amended in 2022? Or maybe I was looking at the wrong piece of the code.
So.
Specifically.
We, we did amend a portion of it, but not that regarding that. That has been there for a while.
Cause I, yeah, the rest of that section I think was from 74.
Yeah, okay. So I can look, but yeah.
I know something was 2022, but I couldn't remember.
I think we amended the, uh, the code as it applied to the Lake Lansing overlay district.
But there's something specific in there.
For setbacks.
Yeah.
On decks.
On decks.
In particular.
So we did amend the number of decks you could have on your house, and I believe that was 2022, if I remember correctly. Cause it was limited to two and we got rid of that.
Yeah, I don't think that was it though.
I, I did see something in there that I think I found as well that had to do with decks can encroach.
It was, it was specific to this particular code.
By, by eight foot. So, I mean, so there you go. I mean, we're, we're at eight, six. So really, it's like you're, you're at six inches over, which.
Code number.
Again, if we're talking about minimum action.
564 is what you're looking for. If you go down to B, so what was I looking at? So, yeah, see the, so.
Yeah.
It'd be roofed.
Unclosed, roofed.
Oh, yeah. See, it's required side or rear yard distance not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
So that looks like section B was amended. So that's a relatively recent, the way I'm reading this, a relatively recent ordinance requirement to allow it to be eight feet within.
Allow it to be eight feet.
A good thing. It's actually helping your case out.
Right.
And the rest of it's all from 1970, but.
Yeah, so this was, um, it was amended because there was a requirement that said you could only have two on your house. So that was all that was taken.
So is this removed?
Removed, yeah.
It's removed, okay. That makes sense then.
Okay.
I'm beating that one to dead horse so we can.
Well, the next section talks about enclosed porches on solid foundations and I question whether a post.
Is a solid foundation?
Yeah. So.
As an enclosed structure with a unsolid foundation rather. Well, it says enclosed either one story or an unenclosed having a solid foundation. So enclosed changes that.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's, that's where we find the need for variance. All right. Well, then I think looking at the code, we can go to criteria number two, which is strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. I mean, I think we can see here, if we're looking at what they have existing, they're six inches over their, and actually not. What's existing, you're adding a foot. Is that correct? So what's existing is seven, six?
Yeah, compared to the existing structure, we're one foot, foot further, which is mostly for just how.
What's existing is, is not, not, that, that portion is not, not conforming.
Well, the practical difficulty would be if they wanted to enclose their porch and stay outside the setback, it would be a very narrow enclosed porch.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did look at like other, um, other avenues for a design that would work with what we're looking at would be down to a design that really wouldn't function.
It's not functional.
You know?
Yeah.
At all really for the intended purpose.
Yeah. Yeah, I could see that as being a practical difficulty, not being able to use the structure in and of itself, you know, if you're, you're not able to even sit out there and make it a space that you can use, why take and spend the money on, on imposing it?
Right.
Um, I could, I could see a practical difficulty there. Curious if anybody else can join me in meeting that criteria?
I believe so.
I would assume when it, when it comes to building decks and engineering in general, that, you know, it comes down to inches and feet sometimes to make it work. So if it just happens to go on by six inches, that's where it's needed to work.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and in, in this case, that's why it kind of has the unique, uh, depth that it does is just because we, the way we were tying it in, getting the roof work since they have the existing part of their house coming out there now, we just wanted to tie in a way where the water shed away from there properly and, you know, to get, and that's the full size of the existing deck and everything like that. So changing it, you know, to come in further, they have like an existing window on their house now, so we'd have to, you know, we'd have to spend more money to, to replace and remove that window and, you know, it'd end up just being a, a smaller room at a higher cost to try and really do something different. And, um, that's kind of the challenges we're facing with it.
I would point out that this isn't a six-inch variance, it's an eight-and-a-half-foot variance.
Right.
It's only six inches maybe long, deeper than the existing deck.
Right.
But there's different rules.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can see the practical difficulty with that, with the, with the building concept of it as well. If you're trying to match up with the back of the existing home and trying to tie in the roof line, I mean, that does get to be more complex and definitely could be, could, could be some practical difficulties for building and for, um, use. So I can, I can meet the practical difficulty standard there. All right. Third criteria is granting the variance is the minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of this zoning ordinance to care public safety and provide substantial justice. And I do think that, again, as Member Chisice just pointed out, it's an eight-and-a-half-foot variance because it's enclosed.
Right.
We're talking about it, you know, it's, this is a, as minimum as, as it gets, I would, I would say. I did, I think if, if this was a structure that was protruding 20 feet into the back of their yard with no apparent rhyme or reason to it, it would, you know, not feel minimum. But considering that it's using the, the existing footprint, matching up the, uh, you know, the rear of the home that's already existing, I could see that this would be a minimum action. Member Chisice.
Well, the other thing is that, um, I think I'd have a different opinion if this was an enclosed foundation down to the ground, but this is not really infringing on any of the water flow or anything else. So I think that's minimal.
Yeah, that's a great point. All right. Criteria number four is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character of the vicinity of the property. I would think that based on the communications that we receive from neighbors and also knowing that it is surrounded on, you know, three, two or three sides by that nature reserve, obviously this isn't a, in anybody's sightlines or, you know, in any way going to negatively affect. So I would say it would not, it would, it could meet that criteria, that will not adversely affect adjacent land. And criteria number five is granting the variance will generally consist with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. I think when we're looking at the code, I think I can see the, the, the reason for it to be a difference between the unenclosed and enclosed porches. But I do think that this, granting this variance will stay within that spirit just based on the fact that this is again, matching up the existing home, not an egregiously large, you know, addition. And it's not going to disrupt or interrupt any of the neighboring homes or negatively affect the neighborhood. So I can meet criteria five. Any thoughts or concerns on any of those criteria? All right. Well, in that case, we have a motion. Member Chisice.
The move that we grant zoning variance requested for 25-04, 2952 Footman for David and Luanne Price, 2952 Footman Drive, East Lansing.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right.
I see.
Me too.
No, go for, go ahead.
I'll second the motions.
Okay, seconded by Member Benoit. All right. Any discussion or concerns on the motion? All right, then we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to approve this variance. Member Benoit?
Yes.
Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Chisice?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So your variance has been approved.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Do we have questions?
You are all set. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for working well with the township and good luck with your enclosed porch.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, that will bring us to ZBAC case number 25-05. And let's see, it is, I'll get back to my agenda. There we go. 1942 Wilder, Robert P. Filter, 1942 Wilder Court, Hazlet, Michigan, 48840. And I'm going to turn it over to Member Koenig for just a moment. Who wants to put something on the record?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to make it clear for the record that I do know the applicant, Mr. Filter. I don't know him super well, but I know him well enough to be dangerous. He lives on the same cul-de-sac I do. So, um, I've gone golfing with him a few times and I'm familiar with this project and what he's intending to do. So.
All right.
Um, just for safety sake and due process, so everyone can be fair, I did want to recuse myself from voting on this tonight. So.
Got it.
I'm going to pack up and step out while you guys.
All right.
We just need a quick vote.
Okay. Um, so what we, this is a vote to approve Member Koenig abstaining from, from voting on this, on ZBAC case number 25-05. Okay. Member Benoit?
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Chisice?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Your excuse.
Thank you.
Get out of here. All right. In that case, now that we've taken care of our business, Mr. Chapman, go ahead and tell us all about it.
Yep. So the applicant's proposing to construct an attached carport on the west side of the single-family home. The work was started without a permit and staff notified the applicant in April. The carport is proposed to be 10 feet by 21 feet in size. The attached carport is shown five feet from the west property line at its closest point. The zoning ordinance requires additions to the principal structure to be seven feet from the side property line. So a two-foot variance for the construction of the attached carport is requested.
Okay. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to come up and speak on the case? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Bob Filter. I reside at 1942 Wilder Court, Hazlet, Michigan, 48840.
Welcome, Mr. Filter. All right. Would you like to add anything to what Mr. Chapman said?
Um, yeah, just one thing. The dimensions that he had in there were incorrect. It's 13 and a half feet by 24 and a half feet.
Are you measuring from the post or the roof?
Uh, I'm measuring from the, from the post to the. I'm measuring from the post to the home, yeah.
Can you say that one one more time, Mr. Filter?
Yeah, the dimensions of the carport are 13 and a half feet by 24 and a half feet.
13 and a half by 24 and a half, okay, sorry, I'm trying to find.
I think I mentioned that in my documentation too, that the width of the proposed carport is 13 and a half feet.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Chapman, the discrepancy between the two, by the 10 foot by 21 foot.
Yeah, I'm doing some calculation here.
Okay, I'll give you a second. Is there anything else you'd like to add while we're doing a little bit of?
No, I just, I have tremendous respect for what you're doing as board members here, I'm currently on leave from the Michigan Interscholastic Golf Coaches Association where they're doing an all-state selection on the other side of town. I serve as the chairman of the governing board at St. Luke Lutheran Church, so I know the work that you're doing is thankless and low-paid, if paid at all, so I appreciate all of you and what you do.
Thank you. All right, so 13 and a half by 14 and a half is what the structure will be?
13 and a half by 24.
By 24, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure I got that right.
And I don't think the depth makes any difference, it's the width.
Yes, right, the width is the issue. So it's a five and a half foot variance still?
Okay.
Okay.
Instead of two feet.
Instead of two feet, it's five and a half, okay, thank you. That's helpful, all right. So if there's nothing more to add, I'm going to go ahead and get into board time, questions, thoughts, concerns on any of these. I can say right now, I, looking at the, looking at the last photo in the packet, the site map, is it just me or is half your house in the 1950s, 1950 Wilder Court?
This is inaccurate, so.
Okay, I was like, this is lines.
Lines are shifted.
That shifted over to the right, the red lines should be farther to the left.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can see that there's a boulder retaining wall in my backyard there because of that sloped grade, and that's all within my yard, it's not protruding into neighbors' yard.
Okay, so where the edge of that retaining wall is, is kind of where we can draw our imaginary red line, is that?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, okay.
The retaining wall, I think, ends within about a foot of my property line, yeah.
Okay, so that gives us a little bit better of a visual, because looking at this, I'm like, I don't even understand how we're.
And you can see also that there is an existing side drive on the home, the carport would be covering the existing side drive that's there.
Okay, so the existing drive is already there?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful.
Is that where you've been parking your truck?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that gets a little bit more clarity, thank you. There we go, that doesn't have the, that doesn't have the newer driveway on it.
No, that one does right there, yeah.
Oh, there we go, there we go.
That layer does have the driveway on it.
There we go, fantastic, okay, that's helpful.
What was the previous image that we just saw?
That's got to be quite old, because there's a large pine tree in that previous image that has been gone for some years now, so.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, okay. I will, I will start unless anybody else has any thoughts, but I, just in reading through the criteria and looking through, I do, I do think this is, this can be, we can find a uniqueness to any situation, but I can find it with this one, especially with the shape of this lot, and trying to find a spot within this lot to add any more coverage for a vehicle, it doesn't look like you can go to the opposite direction.
No, and I'd explored some other options of possibly putting an accessory building off the left rear corner of the existing home, and there was not any room with rear setbacks there to do it as well, so.
Right, either, either, either way, just because of the shape of your.
Correct, and the other side would be impossible anyway, due to the landscaping in my neighbor's home on that side.
Yeah, yeah, you'd be too close, and their houses looks incredibly close to their lot length as well. Okay, I mean, I can, I can kind of start to see that. I do think when we start getting into the practical difficulties with needing a, needing a space to hold a larger vehicle, we're in, what year is this house built?
1987.
1987, so we're thinking, I mean, and I, reading your packet, I was like, yeah, cars were smaller, you know, unless you had one of those big ol' stuff.
Yeah, my current garage is about 20 feet in depth, and I have a full-size Chevy pickup truck that just won't fit in the garage anymore. I had a mid-sized truck, and I got really creative and figured out how to get it in there when I had to, but this truck is just impossible to fit in the current garage that we have. In addition, the current garage we have is below the residence, and so the ceiling is also extremely low, and we have a supporting beam in there, so I may barely clear that supporting beam with the current vehicle I have, but I wouldn't want to try it often.
Right, yeah, and, you know, trucks are not getting smaller. Trucks are not getting any smaller. I can, I can see, I can see there'd be practical difficulties here with needing or having the ability to keep your property and keep your vehicles covered. Member Koenig goes, who's not here, would be one that would definitely agree with me on that one. But any other thoughts or questions regarding this?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, is the, when you're, for a carport versus like a garage, where you're measuring for the setback, does that change, is it the roof?
No.
It's the actual post?
Yes, the post.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be the wall if it were.
It'd be the wall.
The garage itself.
And it's that corner, right?
Correct, so it'd be the lower-left corner of the proposed carport on the site plan there.
Right. And then, and so, and it's five and a half feet, so by the, by the, by the other end of the carport, it's totally within setback.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, as you go down, yeah, because of the angle.
Because of the slant of the, of the property line?
Does the driveway, is there like a setback for driveways?
It's supposed to be two feet.
And it is, when that driveway was poured, it was measured two feet from the property line. At the bend right there, where you see the bend in the driveway, the closest portion is at two feet. My drawing probably doesn't do it.
When was the driveway, extra driveway added?
2012, I believe.
So I'm assuming you have been parking your vehicle there?
Correct.
Just open and, yeah, yeah. And may I also ask, what for you is the advantage of a carport over, say, doing a garage?
The advantage of the carport is the less wear and tear on my vehicle of having it exposed to the weather. It's currently been parked outside for the last year and a half, and I'd like to keep my vehicle, you know, in better condition by having it covered, also snow removal, not having to clear the vehicle off. Now, I'm a teacher, so getting up in the morning to head to school and not having to scrape my window off before I head in is advantageous.
I'm also a teacher and also really like parking in my garage for that reason, it really helps. May I ask though, I guess my question more specifically, why a carport versus doing like an enclosed garage?
Just, you know, to have a carport there, to have something where I can still leave sightlines open so that I'm not completely impeding everybody's view, we do have a large wetland area behind the home, and I would prefer not to enclose it in completely, just so that people can still see through it, and you know, there's, we have a lot of wildlife in the area too, and, you know, to create another structure that's going to impede wildlife in any way.
I appreciate that, all right.
I'm going to ask this question, so it says in our notes that work was started without a permit and staff notified the applicant in April, can you talk through what that meant?
Yeah, certainly, so I had talked to two or three other residents in Meridian Township that had added covered parking off the side of their existing structure, they told me that there was no permit pulled, that they didn't have to do anything in order to do that, so last fall, I began pouring concrete along the outside edge for the posts, so all the posts have, you know, four feet down to be below the frost line, and then I had put up four beams on the outside and then cross beams over to the house, and I'd stopped work for the winter, and then in the springtime, I believe Ron Rao had contacted me and told me that a permit was necessary, so at that time, I did come in and talk to people in the building department and go through the process of filing for the permit.
All right.
I was under the impression that this was not an extension of the principal building and that this was something that would not require a permitting process, that I was just covering my existing driveway, so.
Did you talk to your neighbor about building this at all?
Yes, so the neighbor directly to the left there is Bob and Courtney Hornberger, I believe Bob told me that he had sent you an email that he had no particular objection to this, but.
Was that recently?
It's the one you sent this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, yeah, I forwarded it, so that's, we'll read that into the record then.
Yeah.
And his garage is also on that side, directly adjacent to where I'm proposing this carport to.
That's the neighbor just to?
To the left, yes.
To the left, okay.
The carport can't be seen at all from my neighbor to the right.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that question, I had the same, I had it when I read the packet and forgot all about it, so thank you for bringing that up, appreciate that. Any other thoughts, or shall we get to, yes, Member Trisice?
Well, I was out there today.
Yeah.
I'd like to go look at the sites when things.
When you can, yeah.
And I did see that there are, you've got your gas meter, and I don't know if you're, I didn't see your electric meter, but it's probably.
Directly next, yeah, it's next to it.
So it has to be a little bit pushed out from the house.
Correct.
In order to get a car in there. There's also a doorway there that couldn't open if the car was right tight to it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, my primary concern, I think, was the utilities more than anything, the driveway itself is already has a three-foot space with some landscaping in it from the home out to the driveway, and that was done intentionally to keep, to keep away from those utilities so that there was no chance of.
Sure.
Any mishap.
Okay, that's helpful, because I know that was in the packet, so you was able to.
Yes.
Verify, yeah. So there is, there's a, as far as practical difficulty is concerned, there is a concern?
Yes.
Something that can be addressed with the variance. Okay, well, I think I will start reading criteria then, unless we have any other questions or thoughts. Okay, number one will be unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the lander structure that are not applicable to other lander structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created.
The shape of the lot does that.
Yeah, shape of the lot in and of itself, I can definitely meet that criteria.
Yeah, I mean, if this was not a corner lot like that in another location, I think there would be more, there would potentially be more space.
Yeah, if it was a rectangular lot, you would have a little bit more flexibility as far as where you could put a structure, but the, I mean, the shape of the lot in that triangle shape is just.
Well, it's got a 50-foot front, frontage.
Right.
And 122 in the rear, so.
Right, that's a really.
It's a pretty significant cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Limitation.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely meet the uniqueness of that criteria. Criteria two says the strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms or provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose, and again, just speaking to Member Trisice's experience in your notes, Mr. Filter, the, with the utilities being there and a door being there, any closer in beyond that five and a half foot variance is going to make it nearly, I mean, it's not going to be usable.
Correct.
To put your vehicle, so I can, I can definitely meet that criteria. Any thoughts or concerns on that one?
I agree.
Criteria three is granting the variance is the minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice, and I do think that despite, and I do, you know, that was a red flag for me when I read the packet, was just, why don't we start work without? And this goes to show all of our township residents, always check with the township first, just to be on the safe side.
I'm a lifelong learner, and so I'm learning lots of lessons right now, including how to build and how to, how to figure out Meridian Township Code, so.
Yes, and it's just a good, it's a good rule of thumb, right?
Just because someone didn't get a birth permit or any variance before doesn't mean they shouldn't have.
Right, yes.
I'm also discovering that, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, lots of people do lots of things, and the hard part is, when it goes unnoticed, it's frustrating, and, you know, it's like, well, how come they? But we hope that, you know, our township building and our inspectors will see those things and go, oh, hold on, to keep it fair and keep it equitable for everybody in the township, so. We do encourage doing, following the steps, but that said, you did, when you, when you were made aware and took the steps to come in, and I, we appreciate that, and that's the right thing to do, and sometimes you have to get a variance, and that's why we're here.
Absolutely.
So, as far as a minimum action goes, again, I can see the corner of that is, is going to be into that setback, but as soon as you get to the back corner, it's not, so as far as minimum action goes, this clears those utilities and door, makes it usable, and also it's five and a half feet, so if it's not bothering the neighbor, and it looks like, that's a good time to get that into the record. That said, I will take a moment to add to the record a email that we received from a neighbor at 1950 Wilder Court, that Mr. Hornberger says that he has no issues with the carport being built, and that carport is directly next to his driveway, so I feel like, you know, as far as that goes, I can meet that that would be a minimum action, and carrying out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, I do understand it, it's just a unique shape of a lot that isn't going to give much leeway for anything else there, so I can meet the minimum action criteria. Criteria four is granting the variance.
Sorry, I had one comment on the mission.
Oh, sure.
Minimum criteria.
Yep.
So, or the minimum action necessary.
Sure.
I do want to state that I get, we've had multiple instances now where people have communicated that vehicles are getting larger, and I do think that vehicle choice is present here, and that vehicles aren't always going to be the same sizes, granted, this house was built in the 80s, and vehicles were different sizes, over the decades, they changed, there's now fairly popular mid-sized trucks that people are also buying, so I do think that there could be a slightly less minimum action necessary here to build this, but I'm still okay with it, given that the driveway was built over a decade ago, and so this is just how the property is at this point, but I just wanted to say that out loud.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think the, the important thing to remember too is that it goes with the property, so, you know, that is perhaps something to consider, that it's not necessarily, I don't know, we also live in Michigan, so we're going, we get, we get whatever vehicles, you know, are with the times, we get the newest, largest vehicles. We get the, we get the newest, largest vehicles even more so than maybe other places, just because of our proximity to, and.
We also just purchased a boat recently, and so pulling the boat with anything smaller than that wouldn't, wouldn't work. So the, the vehicle choice had more to do with our boat purchase probably than it had to do with anything else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I do think the, part of, part of the variances is that they, they go with the, the building. So if somebody brought, you know, you sold the house, somebody brought home a Prius, the Prius would still fit. Prius would still fit. So I do, it's, it's, it is, is it minimum, I think, is where, where, where the wonder is, right? Is, is this a minimum action? Is this like addressing the size of the vehicle? Oh, it's a good, good question to think of and definitely keep in mind for future.
Yeah, I would say that if, my opinion might be different if this was an enclosed garage. Which is sightlines and all that, it would be more intrusive on the neighborhood than, than a carport, so I can come up with that.
Yeah. And I do think the applicant seems to have taken that into consideration as, and is being a little bit more thoughtful applying that to, to the decision to do, do it in this way. So I can meet the criteria. I definitely think that, Member Brooks, you have a good point in just keeping in mind also, especially going forward. If we, if we're seeing this repeatedly, is that something we want to set a precedent for, so.
Can I ask one more question about that?
Sure, go for it.
So it's, it looks like it's going to be, how tall is the carport going to be?
The, the opening is ten feet.
Okay.
If it, if it had been a garage, it would have probably had a, a lower opening. I think most garages are set at about seven feet. Sometimes taller garage doors are eight feet. This one's set at ten feet.
Okay.
There are, there are a few times where we do bring our boat home from up north, and I would back the boat underneath there. And just to make sure that it would clear the boat, I wanted to make sure that it was up at ten feet. But when we have it home for a weekend to use on Lake Lansing, it's something, if you own a boat, you'd prefer that it's covered rather than being exposed to the elements, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, and then we get to criteria number four, which is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character of the vicinity of the property. Again, I can address, just based on the communication we had from neighbor, from talking to Mr. Filter, and from, you know, various board member comments about, you know, not being intrusive to the, to the property or to the neighborhood existing, and not affecting sightlines and things. So I don't see where it would adversely affect the adjacent land. Go ahead, Member Benoit.
I would like to add that because the driveways are, driveway is already there, it kind of goes in the spirit of the driveway, just adding a carport. You know, it's not like you're throwing something in there that already isn't a part of the, this, the building.
It goes from uncovered parking to covered parking, exactly.
Great point. All right, and criteria number five is granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. And I don't have any concerns or questions about criteria number five. I can meet that quite easily. Member Chisice?
Well, I do too, but it's primarily because if the alternative is to park on that very tight cul-de-sac, that, that is definitely adverse to public transportation.
And I don't know when you visited perhaps, but you see that it only takes a few vehicles parked out on that cul-de-sac for it to become dangerous even, so.
Right, it's pretty tight.
The other part is if you tried to park a vehicle or two in the driveway, it could encroach on the sidewalk also.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, more than, more than one, I mean, one truck in the driveway, it looks like, well, it'll back you up to the sidewalk, so, yeah. All right. Well, on that note, I will motion to approve ZB A case number twenty-five dash zero five, nineteen forty-two Wilder, Robert P. Filter, nineteen forty-two Wilder Court, Hazlet, Michigan, four-eight-eight-four-zero, as presented. Oh, I'm sorry. I will say as the five-point-five-foot variance in the, in the setback.
I'll support.
All right. All right, the, any questions, thoughts, concerns on the motion on the table? All right, then this is a vote to approve ZB A case number twenty-five dash zero five. Member Benoit?
Did we get a second?
I did.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah. Member, sorry, vote to approve, Member Benoit?
Yes.
Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Chisice?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so your variance has been approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Filter.
Again, I appreciate all of your public service. I know what it's like, so. I just came off of six years on my church governing board, and policy review can be one of the worst things, so appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, in that case, we have no other unfinished business, and we will open the floor for public remarks. Bye to the public. And I will close public remarks, open board member comments.
I just have a question. Does a.
Member Brooks, go for it.
Does a side driveway require a permit?
No.
No, so like somebody could put a driveway on their property? Okay.
Yeah, no permits required for driveways.
Yeah. The code is.
Two feet from the side yard, and then, in most instances, it's thirty-five percent of your front yard.
Thirty-five, yeah.
But Lake Lansing is different.
Right, of course it is. Why would it not be? It's Lake Lansing. Oh, I can't wait for you to have some Lake Lansing cases. That'll be so much fun.
Well, we haven't seen.
We haven't seen any.
Since we changed the ordinance, so it seems to be working good.
You just get a lot of them for decks.
Oh, yeah.
Decks, porches, driveways.
Got a couple.
Yeah, yeah, but not recently, so. All right, any other board member comments? All right, and I will close board, board member comments, and we are officially adjourned. Not our fastest meeting, but we did.